Here.
Grocey, Cummings, present for.
And would Councilmember Herman please lead us in the invocation and the pledge?
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concerns for the people whom we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have a presentation by Kelly Nyforth regarding the Esri Award for Lake Shore Redevelopment.
Thank you very much. I'm here today with some exciting news that the City of Oshkosh was awarded for some of the work we've done on a project. I'll start this slideshow here. Okay. Jake's gonna help me out with that. Just some background, the city has been working on multiple plans with Houssil Levine and Associates out of Chicago. Some of those include the Sawdust Plan, Imagine Oshkosh Plan, the Corridor Plans, and then also the Lake Shore Oshkosh Ave redevelopment plans. So Houssil Levine were Associates were presenting at a conference and some Esri employees, Esri is a type of GIS that we use, the program we use to make maps, they heard the presentation and they were using our projects as part of the presentation. They heard the presentation and they said they'd like Houssil Levine and Associates and the City of Oshkosh to submit information to be considered for a SAG Award. SAG is Special Achievements in GIS. So it's a very, very, you know, honorable award that people from all over the world try to get this award. Typically for a SAG Award, an employee of Esri has to nominate you and they gather your information. And then the owner of Esri, Jack Dangermount, which is a privately held company, he chooses the gradual award winners. And out of that, there's 175 that win with over 100,000 Esri clients around the world. So it's a very big honor. We applied and we were chosen, so we're very excited. Mr. Dangermount loved the fact that we use so many different types of GIS for so many different types, parts of our project, including public outreach, showing maps to the public, gathering data with our business analysts, and putting it on a map and just, it was just really, it was an all encompassing effort. So he was very excited about it. On the website, now it looks like I have my GIS up here, I'll quick, or my PowerPoint, these are just, we were on their website and showing that we had won the award. And this is a picture that we, oh, I apologize, it's not coming up. I have it here. We won an award and had a special award ceremony and we had our picture with him. And maybe I'll have Jeff, if somebody hold the award here. And during the award, he specifically mentioned Oshkosh during the ceremony, so he really, really liked our project. And when we had our picture with him, he said that he, you know, loved our project and he wanted to come to Oshkosh for EAA sometimes. So he said, "Come on, you know, over, we'll, you know, welcome you with open arms." So the city received recognition throughout the conference and it was just great publicity for the city, great promotion. A lot of Esri employees knew about our project and were very excited about it. And I did a podcast to talk about it, so that will be released in the near future. Another surprise was Houssil Levine and Associates, they made a kind of a map that showed our project and kind of different aspects of it. And they can submit this map, it's called the Map Gallery. It's hundreds of maps at the conference. And Esri employees go around and vote which one they like the best. And ours was voted first. So another, you know, exciting award for us too. But there was a lot of city staff included in the project. Jeff Now in the Planning Department, Mark Lyons, and Am Dorn in our IT Department there here with us. Darren was also a big part of it. Our engineering staff was definitely a huge part of it and they're still working on it, you know, making those maps a reality now to put, you know, actually into plans. So the conference itself was amazing. We learned a lot of things. And we just want to show you the award that we received and thank you for your continued support with GIS and we're excited to show you what else we can do. And sorry, the PowerPoint didn't work. It'll be a lot of great pictures.
For a graphics award, it's kind of tough not to brag without the graphics, but we'll get it for council.
I'll email it to you.
We'll get a nice link for you. We'll put it on, we'll get it on the website. Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation for Civility Month. And I believe we have someone here to accept that. Whereas the City of Oshkosh is known as a friendly welcoming community that serves as a destination for many due to its status as a constant event city. And whereas the City of Oshkosh offers an exceptionally strong quality of life that attracts individuals and organizations to live, work, study, and enjoy the beauty of our immediate surroundings. And whereas the Oshkosh Civility Project founded in 2010 is based on the work of Dr. P. M. Forney and his book Choosing Civility. And whereas on June 14, 2011, the Oshkosh Common Council adopted Resolution 11-270 declaring its support for the Oshkosh Civility Project and incorporated its principles into council's operating rules. And whereas the Civility Project has been active and engaged in community, regional, and broader efforts to promote understanding and awareness of how communication patterns impact others. And whereas the Civility Project is supporting an initiative during the month of August 2018 to advance the cause of civility and the shared understanding of the importance of our actions and conduct. Now therefore, I, supposed to be Steve Cummings, but I'm not Steve Cummings. Lori Palmieri, Deputy Mayor of City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim that the month of August 2018 shall be known as Civility Month in the City of Oshkosh. That people are encouraged to reaffirm the principles of the Oshkosh Civility Pledge, which states, "We build a stronger and more diverse community by actively sharing our ideas and opinions with others in thoughtful and considerate ways. By practicing this basic commitment to civility, we learn and grow from one another even in disagreement." Sue Panik, would you please accept this?
I will. All right, thank you.
Yes, I'd like two other members of our civility group to come up. Lori, we also have a proclamation to present. In our eight years, we have honored four people with a Champion of Civility Award. Former Mayor Burke Tower is one, and the last was Stan Mack, and today is Sue Panik. So you will hold this, and she does not know that. So we have our own plaque, we have something right here.
Okay, I'm dressed like this because I just got off to stuff the truck. And I said, we stuff a UPS truck, yeah.
And did you stuff it too?
We don't mess around, we did pretty well.
There you go.
This will be brief, but it's very important. A select few individuals have distinguished themselves in service in support of these efforts of civility. And, are we all here? Where we go?
That way.
Well, there's our man, okay.
There you go.
And this award is being presented to Sue Panik through her leadership and advocacy as a member of our core team. Sue has helped our community to earn recognition as a friendly place with a heartfelt commitment to the practice of kindness and thoughtfulness in our interpersonal interactions. Upon her retirement from the Oshkosh Area United Way, which is not today, obviously, we also proudly recognize and commemorate her service to our community through the wonderful commitment she's had to her work at the United Way. So Sue, a pleasure.
You know, if anyone knows me, you know I'm all about collaboration and you can't do collaboration without civility. So thank you very much.
And you have a bag to take home. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have citizen statements to council. It's the first opportunity. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda. Are limited to issues that have an impact on the City of Oshkosh. And the common council may address at a future meeting and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Pam, do we have anyone registered for citizen statements?
Yes, we do. Jane Doherty, 11 Canofort.
Thank you. I'm Jane Doherty from 11 Canofort, and I'm here tonight to acknowledge that a new item has been added to Oshkosh that adds to our quality of life. I moved here in 2000 and I was shocked to discover that a city this size did not have a Toastmasters organization. So I was more than delighted when I saw in the paper a few weeks ago that Water City Speakers Group, under the auspices of the International Toastmasters, has started here in Oshkosh. Yes, it's taken 18 years, but Toastmasters is here. And I'm here to vouch that I participated in the Toastmaster Program for communication and leadership. And I found it very beneficial in not only my professional life, but in my personal life. The Water City Toastmasters, or Water City Speakers Group, they meet at Fox Valley Tech Riverside Campus. And their meetings are the first and third Monday of the month, 5:30 to 6:30 in the evening, room 115. And it's not necessarily for students, it's for anyone who wants to improve their ability to communicate and lead. And I thought, what better opportunity? It helps people in staff meetings at work, if they serve on a community board, if they serve on even a church committee, or participate in a civic organization. The skills that you can practice in Toastmasters helps you to be a better speaker and communicator and leader. And I was also thinking with new businesses being developed and expanding and coming to Oshkosh, there's going to be a need for good communicators and leaders. And what better resource than to have a Toastmaster organization in our city? So I'm here to speak on behalf of Toastmasters and I strongly endorse the good that can come from participating in Toastmasters.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
So add that to the quality of life, Toastmasters.
Duly noted. Next, we have our consent agenda items. Pam, is there anyone registered to speak for any of the consent agenda items?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Can we please take the roll?
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Muggerhour.
Aye.
Palmieri.
Aye.
Period four.
No items removed from our consent agenda. We'll move on to pending resolutions. Resolution 18422, approval, approved final plat known as Pickard Estates, Phase 1, North 3300 Block of West 9th Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Is there anyone registered to speak?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Can we take the roll?
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Muggerhour.
Aye.
Palmieri.
Aye.
Period four.
Next is 18423, approve initial resolution for special assessments for utilities, sidewalk grading and gravelling, concrete paving, terraced trees, and street lighting for Pickard Estates Phase 1, North 3300 Block of West 9th Avenue with signed waivers. Anyone registered?
No one is registered.
All right, bring it back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Can we please take the roll?
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Muggerhour.
Aye.
Palmieri.
Aye.
Period four.
Next, Resolution 18424, accept and approve waiver of special assessment notices in hearing in connection with improvements, Pickard Estates, Phase 1, North 3300 Block of West 9th Avenue. Anyone registered, Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Discussion. Can we take the roll?
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Muggerhour.
Aye.
Palmieri.
Aye.
Period four.
Resolution 18425, approve final resolution for special assessments for utilities, sidewalk grading and gravelling, concrete paving, terraced trees, and street lighting for Pickard Estates, Phase 1, North 3300 Block of West 9th Avenue. I'm sorry, that was supposed to be 426, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Approved developers.
425.
We are on 425, okay. My apologies. With signed waivers. And do we have anyone registered on the waivers?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to council for motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. And take the roll, please, Pam.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Muggerhour.
Aye.
Palmieri.
Aye.
Period four.
18426, approve developer's agreement, Pickard Estates, Phase 1, North 3300 Block of West 9th Avenue. Anyone registered?
No one is registered.
And bring it back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Herman.
Thank you. Darren, if you could just, I don't want to put you in a spot, but developer agreements, we've had some issues over the years. This is a whole new subdivision. Maybe, actually Lynn might be the one to speak on it a little bit. We have all the Ts crossed, Is dotted, so that there's no issues coming back to us with this development. I know it's, this is the third reading, third time it's come back to council, so there's been some issues out there. But I'm just thinking again of the issues we had out on the northwest side of the city with that subdivision and a couple of other ones where developer agreements were kind of loosely tied and they went into bankruptcy and things like that, so.
We have the financial guarantees in place. We have a letter of credit for the private, privately paid portions of this. We have, in this case, the delays were caused by some of the issues with the title of the property and just working that out. And that took longer to work through than they had anticipated. It wasn't, it wasn't issues so much with the financing itself, it was, they wanted, the banks wanted those issues cleared up so that when they issued the financing, it was all, the title was all clear. So that, that was kind of the holdup on it.
All right. I just see on page four of the payment for city services that they will pay cash payment part of any city services. So it looks like we have a pretty tight contract here and we shouldn't have any issues. I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware that, you know, when we do these developer agreements, that they're really tying the developer to committing to what they said that they're going to commit to. And not leave the property owners that buy lots in those subdivisions hanging, because that's what's happened a couple of times in the past. So just want to make sure that we don't have those issues as this development goes. Because this is really extending us to the very far edges of the city, pretty much. South of Clarville Road just about, so. All right, that's all my questions. Thank you.
I guess as a follow-up to that, do we also have a map to show just where this is located for general public purposes?
Yep, should be one in there. I know there's one in the packet.
If you could just give us a second, maybe get it on the screen for folks at home.
As soon as Jake can pull it up, this is on the north side of 9th Avenue, just about a quarter mile east of Clarville Road. The other nearest subdivisions are kind of to the south. Lynn and Oaks is to the south as soon as it gets pulled up.
We've had it on the agenda a couple of times and it's kind of like the drum roll, right? We're kind of waiting to see what this relates to, so maybe we could just share it.
If it would help the council, we have at least one more item with Pickard Estates.
Yep.
So if you want to give Jake a few moments to find it and
We could bring it back.
You can keep rolling with the items.
All right. So did we have any further discussion on 426? Pam, could you please take the roll?
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Muggerhour.
Aye.
Palmieri.
Aye.
Period four.
All right, and one last of the new, of the pending resolutions. 18427, approve long-term maintenance agreement and stormwater management facility maintenance agreement for Pickard Estates Phase 1. Anyone registered on this?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this particular item? Can we please call the roll?
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Muggerhour.
Aye.
Palmieri.
Aye.
Period four.
Okay. Must've got damage in the roof.
Oh, there we have it.
As you can see, here's 9th Avenue, here's Clarville. This is the subject property. You can see here's the, here's the city subdivisions over here to the south. Casey's Meadow, that's the Bruce subdivision down here. Whitsall Avenue up here, so yeah.
Move that down a little bit, Darren.
This down?
Little more.
There you go.
Yep.
All right, so yeah, here's the subject site, 9th Avenue, Clarville, Whitsall, city subdivisions here, city subdivisions here, West Haven over on that location. So yeah, it is, it is getting towards the western part of the, of our growth area, but it is in, it is in our growth area. And it's an area that, you know, we'd like to start seeing some of these subdivisions start to develop over the next few years.
There's a small buffer between this parcel and the Church of the East, as well as between this parcel and Clarville itself.
Correct. If you see that little parcel there, and I think they've been trying to talk with these particular properties potentially, and we've aimed some roads in that direction. So it could, this, this land just to the east could integrate into this subdivision.
I guess I just wanted to follow up with a question too, and that is, was this, if I recall, did this also have some parkland dedication?
Yes, they did.
Did you point that out maybe on the map where that is located or to be, is that yet to be determined?
No, it's within the subdivision, so Jake, you'd have to pull up the actual plat itself.
You can. Should be on Exhibit B, I think, Darren.
Yeah.
So folks can see that at home.
Okay. So if you, you had, you had it, Jake. There it is. So on the Elmo, that's fine. All right.
Technical difficulties for your entertainment.
Here's the road coming in, here's the main road coming in. So this, this land here, that is, that is where the parkland dedication is occurring.
So it looks like right in the center of the subdivision. Thank you for that visual aid. All right, so next, we have new resolutions. Resolution 18428, approve settlement agreement with Lowe's Inc. for property tax assessment tax years 2016 to 2018 for property located at 1075 North Washburn. Do we have anyone registered to speak on this?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Muggerhour.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I guess my only comments on this is, and I think we've, numerous ones of us have said it before, it's not just the city refunding tax dollars. This is the school district as well as the county, the state a little bit too, but the school district itself as part of this agreement will be losing over $40,000 in revenue because of the Lowe's refund. So while that is a little bit smaller than the city's portion, it's still significant and budgets are always tight. And that should be taken into account that this doesn't just affect the city taxpayer, it also affects the school district as well.
Yes, it does.
Agreed. Other discussion? Can we please take the roll?
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Palmieri.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Muggerhour.
Aye.
Period four.
Next is Resolution 18429, grant noise variance requests to AT&amp;T for construction work at North Main Street and Washington Avenue, August 18th to 19th, or August 25th to 26th. Anyone registered for this item?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Muggerhour.
Yep, thank you, Deputy Mayor. We're obviously coming up on it. The options are either this weekend or next weekend. And looking at this ordinance, excuse me, this resolution as well as ordinance 18435, if they were to be doing work this weekend, they should have noticed the seven-day window for construction already. And I haven't seen any signs on Main Street, as well as we've got farmers markets going on. And I know that was part of the, part of the reason for doing this potentially on a weekend, was to reduce the traffic impact for commercial traffic. But we're talking about breaking up concrete and I guess maybe you can go into a little bit more detail as to what we're going to experience when they do this work over a weekend, if we approve it.
The hope is to have the contractor do the saw cutting during the work week. They can do that, flag traffic around to do the saw cutting to eliminate the noise from that. The noise, the variance also will let them start earlier than the seven o'clock normal start time so that they can do the actual breaking of the concrete in the intersection prior to the farmer's market starting. There will be construction activity at that point in time, but it won't be the concrete breaker, it will be a backhoe, excavation, some dump trucks. So while it will still certainly be noisier than a normal Saturday, the hope is that it's not going to be as obtrusive by getting some of that real heavy, hard-hitting work done ahead of time.
But it still will have a, an impact on that, because I believe the farmer's market runs right up to that intersection if memory serves.
Correct. Farmer's market basically starts just on the north side of the intersection there, yes.
Correct. And we've notified them and talked with them?
I
As to the impact that it could have on the, to the
Personally, no. I recall a discussion being there wasn't a lot of concern, because the booths that were located down there weren't dependent on dust and noise wasn't going to be as much of a factor with them.
Great.
But I'll make sure that Ms. Snell notifies the farmer's market. Just out of common courtesy, we'll make sure that that's done. Thank you for that suggestion.
Councilmember Herman.
Well, to follow up on Mr. Muggerhour's, my recollection is correct, there are food vendors that are close to that intersection. They're right outside the bank, two of them are, so.
I'm neither going to confirm nor deny that, because I might, I might frequent one of those places.
Well, I guess my only thought is, is that, you know, they should be notified and really in advance, so. And I guess we're approving two options here in a sense. They either, if they're not ready to go the 18th, 19th, then they'll be ready to go the 25th to 26th. Is that how I read this?
The intent was to allow for, in case there was inclement weather forecast out there, that they didn't have to try to do it during a bad stretch of weather to make the work go more efficiently. the work go more efficiently.
Okay. All right. But yeah, I'm 99% sure there's food vendors right in that corner.
There's, there might be a barbecue place right over there. That's...
May or may not.
May or may not. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Muggerauer?
One last thing, because as I'm reading this, I just want to make sure that we're reading it right and we're seeing it right. It's noted that they would give, they would post warning signs seven days prior to closure, and there's been nothing posted that I've seen.
If they haven't posted it yet, then...
Then they're not working this weekend.
Then they won't have the option of working this weekend.
That's the answer I was looking for. Thank you. Perfect.
All right. Any further discussion on that? Can we please take the role?
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried four.
Next, we have pending ordinances. Ordinance 18-430, establish street grades. Pickard Estates, Phase One, North 3300 Block of West Ninth Avenue. And is there anyone registered to speak on that?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. And take the role, please.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried four.
Next is ordinance 18-431, authorizing public construction for Pickard Estates, Phase One, North 3300 Block of West Ninth Avenue. Anyone registered on that?
No one is registered.
Hand back to council for motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. And take the role, please.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried four.
Next, we have ordinance 18432, approve closure of Ninth Street Road, West Ninth Avenue, from Linden Oaks Drive to the proposed Paul's Place. Is there anyone here registered to speak on that?
No one is registered.
Hand back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
And discussion. Councilmember Muggerauer?
I think I just have one correction. I believe I caught maybe a date issue that needs to be just updated within there. Section three, line six, says that we approved, approved the ordinance on August 9th, 2018. I think today's the 15th. Other than that, that's my only correction.
It will be updated.
Perfect.
Any further discussion? Can we take the role?
Do I need to...
Do we need to waive the rules?
Not this one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Herman?
Sorry, go ahead. Okay, sorry.
We noted the correction. That'll be taken care of.
Yes.
All right. So I don't think we need to amend it.
Perfect.
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried four.
Next, we have new ordinances. Let's see, the first one, there's no anticipated formal action taken on any of these items at the meeting, so we'll go with 18433, adopt general retention disposition schedules pertaining to police department records and telephone and video surveillance records related to city facilities, and amend public records ordinance to include definitions and clarify provisions pertaining to city audits. Pam, is there anyone registered on this item?
No one is registered.
All right. There's no action on that, so we will move on to, let's see here. Do we have any discussion? We're not taking the role. So next is ordinance 18434, approve zone change from institutional to institutional with planned development overlay IPD for property located at 1331 High Avenue. Plan commission recommends approval. And is there anyone registered for this item?
No one is registered.
Okay. No further discussion? Any discussion on this? And then finally, new ordinance 18-435, approve temporary closure of North Main Street at Washington Avenue for construction work, August 18th, 19th, or August 25th, 26th? Wait a minute. We just, we just did that one. We've got to waive the rules on this one. All right.
This is just the closure of the street.
The closure of the street. So there'll be two votes here. First vote will be based on staff recommending waiving the rules and adopting on the first reading. Is there anyone that would like to speak to that?
No one is registered.
Bring it back for motion in a second on waiving the rules and adopting on first
I move that we waive the rules and adopt on the first reading.
Second.
Discussion. All right. And take the role on...
Waiving the rules.
Waiving the rules.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried four.
So the second part of that would be to then approve that temporary closure of North Main Street, and again, Washington Avenue for construction work, August 18th or 19th, or 25th, 26th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. And take the role, please.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried four.
Next, we have council discussion, direction to city manager and future agenda items. And turn that over to city manager, Rola.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Paul Mary. There's one item listed, and I'm going to just brief council on another one that Deputy Mayor Paul Mary and I were quite active with today. First off, just a reminder, next week is our budget workshop on Wednesday at 5:00 PM. This will be the second of our budget workshops. The topics, we're going to be doing an update on our audit for 2017, as well as some additional forecasting that we want to provide with council. The other one has to do with Oregon Street, under construction right now. And as a result of some of the construction, to get ourselves compliant, we haven't changed the profile, as the council directed, no change in the profile. But because of the need to get lanes more compliant with truck turning radius and things like that, stacking, staffs had to make some changes to the painting of the line. Where council comes in with that is, council approves any changes in parking. And as Ms. Paul Mary will attest to, the paintings have already gone out there. Most of the time, we bring this to council before the project's done, and we should have and we didn't. We need to get it for council, to get to council for their approval because the roads are ready to open up in this area, and the parking is more restrictive than currently exists, and for us to be able to enforce that. But as Ms. Paul Mary can attest to, we've received a lot of inquiries about this, and I've asked staff to take a look at what we can do because parking, obviously, is something very important to the residents. You heard from them during your deliberations on what the width was going to be. You know, I've taken a look at it. It's probably important to take a look at ways to make it better turning for safety purposes and things like that. But the practical side of it is, you know as well as anybody how important parking is out to those folks. So I think we need to bring that, well, I know, we need to bring that back because council would have to, excuse me, adopt an ordinance, so we'll be bringing that back. I'm not sure if it's necessarily going to be the next meeting because Mr. Godey has to go out and make sure that what actually got constructed matches up with the drawings, and sometimes the drawings and what's actually done kind of change up a little bit. So we want to make sure if we're going to start tweaking some of the plans, we want to make sure that council's fully aware of what those are. Maybe on the 28th, it may actually step into September, but just wanted to make you aware of it. You may get some calls from some of the businesses primarily along up and down Oregon Street, although I think the deputy mayor has had her fill of those already today. So you may hear about those, and we're going to give you a little update in this week's newsletter.
Councilmember Herman?
Question, Mr. Rola. Traditionally, these go back through our boards and commissions. So should the bike and pet be brought up to speed? Should the traffic review parking commission be, or are we sidestepping them because of where we are in the project?
I would say that it would be appropriate to take it to traffic and parking.
Traffic, for sure.
Bike and pet, it's not a bike and pet route, so I would say no to that.
Okay.
But I think it's a valid point, and we may need to take a look at our schedule, and it may be appropriate to get them on board with that. You know, you recall like North Main Street?
Correct.
We went through that whole process, and I think it went well because we were very engaged early on in the process. So I appreciate you.
I mean, I, you know, I went out there today after I was notified about the issue, and I can see why they took that parking away, but at the same time, that isn't what, you know, the minutes said and things. And, you know, I know it's a truck route, so that is an issue in and of itself, but then several of us have been talking, you know, there were businesses that said that trucks have to park right in front of their business. Well, they got no parking in front of their business. It's going to be very hard to unload their semis at some of those businesses. So, and is it wide enough? I mean, we had this discussion about Jackson Street. We couldn't put a designated left turn lane in. This street seems to be a whole lot narrower, and we're looking at putting a designated left turn lane in?
Well, that was, you can put a designated left turn lane in, but the impact's going to be on the parking. And we've lived with it this way, and, but it hasn't been ideal. And I think we've seen those situations where, you've seen trucks turn left one way or, you know, either going on or off the ninth, and it's pretty tough.
Pretty difficult.
It is. So that, so I think we need some time to get those to you, but I appreciate the point about traffic. I think we need to run it by the traffic committee as well. So thank you for that feedback.
Because if we have to change the parking ordinance, they should, that committee should weigh in on that.
Yeah. So we have at least two council members that were aware of it before I announced it.
And I guess I just would follow up with one other question so that the businesses are made aware. They were planning, I believe, on the street opening up, at least in some sections, here in the next couple of days. This will not delay the street opening up, correct?
I won't let paint get in the way of opening up a street. If there was a hole in the street, that'd be one thing. Paint is, there'll be a little inconvenience with the parking because it's going to look like you can't park in those areas legally, you know, we can enforce that. But I'd encourage people to make do with what the paint job is out there, and depending on what council decides on, that's what we're going to do. And I think you're going to want to take a look at some options. I just know you're going to want to take a look at some options. So I appreciate your indulgence with that.
All right.
That's all I have.
So next is our second opportunity for citizen statements to council. Do we have anyone registered?
We do not.
All right. And on to, let's see, we don't have any council member announcements or statements, so we'll go on to city manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Item 34 is really just to follow up on something we had brought to council's attention about, somebody expressed an interest in doing some pedal pubs, and I had indicated in a newsletter a couple of weeks ago that it would be on this week's agenda. There are a few things we need to work out to get the ordinance in reviewable form for the council. The person who is interested in it is aware of this and is okay. We've got to work out some things, and he's still in the process. He just wants to know that we're moving towards this. By law, we don't have to adopt an ordinance. State law will swoop in and it'll be covered, but it won't really address local concerns with that. So what we'd like to do is make sure that we have an ordinance that we can live with. So yes, thank you, Jake, we have some examples because even though it's not on the agenda this time, people are saying, what are pedal pubs? Those are pedal pubs. We don't have a capital in downtown Oshkosh, but this is an example of what these would look like. And obviously, they're pretty good size, so it's not just that, it's not like a little, like tandem bicycle or anything. This is the size of a full-size vehicle, like a van. So we want to make sure that we're accommodating all the factors in there. These don't go as fast as cars, and they're going to be going through the downtown area where there's a lot of vehicles. And, I mean, somebody mentioned earlier, it's a little tight in the downtown. They're going to be going, we want to make sure that we put them in the right spots, and those are the things that we're working through. So when we bring this back, I think we'll be in a position where the person who would like to do this is going to be understanding and comfortable where we're at. Police are going to be comfortable where we're at. So look for that in an upcoming meeting.
So I guess I'm just kind of curious, is, perhaps Attorney Lawrence can answer this. Does this require, or Clerk Ubrich, does this require a liquor license, or?
No. But, go ahead.
They don't actually, they cannot serve on the vehicle, but you can bring...
Your own refreshments.
It's bring your own from a licensed establishment.
So then, if we have our establishments that serve alcohol, and there's no carryout beyond the fencing, is this going to address the in-between, the establishment serving and the pedal pub? The open intoxicants?
They can move...
And the chief left.
Or she did.
I haven't seen that specifically addressed in any of the other ordinances. It's, I mean, as you point out, there would be that, walk across the sidewalk to get onto it. I, we reviewed all of the other municipalities that haven't, I haven't seen anybody else addressing that. They do have the ability to, you know, bring your own on. You could leave it capped and do it there, you know, uncapped it once you get on or something as well. So it just has not been an issue that I've really seen addressed, and I'm not sure how the police department would deal with that, but...
Sure.
Those are the, obviously, the details we're working through right now. So that's that, and...
Councilmember Osby has a question?
No, actually, just a comment. I've traveled quite a bit to cities that have the pedal pubs, and in having discussions, I've had an opportunity to talk to a few, actually, to be honest, there is significant